There is no plan before us. This is strictly for rezoning. Do, does the township want to change the zoning for this development?
The first lap that we're gonna shut down.
So.
Doesn't, doesn't rezoning affect infrastructure?
Ladies and gentlemen, there will be a time for you to comment. Please let us finish with our consultants. They may answer some of the questions that you have. Ms. Yegel, as planning consultant, do you have comments that you would like to share or can share with us?
Yes, my name is Carolyn Yegel and I am the planning consultant for the township. I have been provided information as part of the submission to review and prepare the technical points as it relates specifically to rezoning requests of R2 to R4. I would request, before I identify any points in this review and a copy of it will be then transmitted for the purpose of the written record, that there is no comment from the audience while I am speaking. The reason for that request is there is a significant amount of information that we have been evaluating as what is presented in the existing township zoning ordinance as adopted and the application items that are relevant to the rezon. I would request that if anyone has comments, that they retain them for the next available points in the agenda. And if there is, then back and forth, I will stop speaking until there is a moment in which I can then speak again. Thank you. As part of my technical review, I have been assigned to identify the request and I received it in full as the township did on the 26th of January. I was requested to examine the application and to opine as to its consistency with the township's community planning measures. There are a series of things that are considered as part of this document. Before I go any further, is there anyone that cannot hear me? Thank you. I summarize a series of facts as it relates related to these various planning documents and the rezoning application package, the provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, and the professional input that's reflecting here as a part of our technical review. For the reasons set forth in this report, we believe that the Red Rocks group's R4 rezoning application is not consistent with the township's community planning measures. There are a series of criteria that we had to look at as part of this document. We did look at the 2018 comprehensive plan that the Township Board of Supervisors adopted. We looked at the future land use map within that 2018 comprehensive plan. We looked at Allegheny County's comprehensive plan and we looked at the county's future land use map, which is also an item within their overall comprehensive plan. We did look at the South Park Township's existing zoning ordinance and we also looked at Exhibits A through K a submitted by the applicant for the request to rezone to R4. In terms of the timeframe of items to date relevant to getting to this public meeting with the Planning Commission, there are two, again, two items that are from a published documentation standpoint that the municipality, any municipality within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that has zoning, that need to consider. The first item of that is within the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code in Section 609, which is related to the enactment of zoning ordinance amendments. While this request is specifically to a zoning map amendment, it does fall within the guise of that section within the Municipalities Planning Code. It is a form of an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The second item is we're looking at the community's zoning ordinance, Section 2505, which again identifies a process associated with the actual rezoning request. So the township received the application requesting the rezoning 30 days prior to a regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting and that complete application was, based upon our records from the township, was received on January 26th, 2023. The township advertised a February 22nd Planning Commission meeting agenda items in the Park News and made the application information available for public review. The advertisement deadline for the February Planning Commission meeting was the 27th of January, the which it provided by, that date. Thirdly, the township transmitted the rezoning application on 1/27/23 to Allegheny County for a 45-day public review prior to a Board of Supervisors' public hearing. And stipulated, again, I'm referencing points in time that are within either of these two planning documents. All this information is taking us through this process. Thank you. So the County Commons referenced a mixture of current and past relevant planning documents. I did have follow-up phone and email correspondence with the county post-review delivery. The Township Planning Commission received the rezoning application to, sorry, for the 2/22/23, for the, 3/23, for this March 22nd/23 Planning Commission Agenda Discussion. So again, it received it within that 30 days timeframe of reference. Secondly, or excuse me, five. The township mailed the public hearing notice on 3/3 to property owners within 200 feet of the property and approximately based on records of 39 of those notices were submitted. The township mailed project notice on March 7th to the municipality of Bethel Park. The township posted the public meeting notice for the evening's session in the Township Municipal Building Lobby and on the subject parcel on March 14th of 2023. The Township Planning Commission, as of the time I prepared this prior to the meeting, defined that you were scheduled to review this rezoning application in this technical review as part of the evening's meeting and to take public comment. The Township Board of Supervisors are scheduling a public hearing on the rezoning application and placing the item on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for consideration in public hearing for the April meeting at their March 13th regular meeting. The advertisement deadline for that public hearing notice was the 23rd, coming up to be the 23rd of March and the 30th of March, so within the required timeframe for that public hearing. It's our understanding also that the township is scheduled to transmit the public hearing notice on the 24th of March to the Park News for the April 1st Park News edition. The township is scheduled to post the April 10th public hearing notice in the Township Municipal Lobby and on the subject parcel on March 31st of 2023. The Township Board of Supervisors also is scheduled to hold an April 10th public hearing and upon the public hearing closing, the Board of Supervisors may vote to amend or not amend the official zoning map based upon the request for the reason. So that sequence is something, again, relevant to, there are two documents, Municipalities Planning Code and the Township Zoning Ordinance that are, again, relevant to this process in which we are here for this evening. So many things have happened prior to this evening and things are scheduled should happen after this meeting. All right, as part of our review, we did identify those six documents and if anyone needs me to repeat them, I can, please raise your hand. All right, I don't see anyone's hand raised, so I'm gonna continue on. And I'm gonna wait. All right, South Park Township's future land use plan classifies areas within the boundaries of the subject parcel as low intensity residential. We compared the township's future residential land use classifications to the township's official zoning map. The pattern of that comparison is that the low intensity residential areas identified on the, within the future land use map of the comprehensive plan are identified as R1, low density, single-family residential. And also within that same future land use color of low intensity residential is the R2, medium density, single-family residential district. So that is pertaining to our subject parcel's existing zone. Secondly, there is an identification of moderate intensity residential on the future land use plan. And this is equivalent, as it is comparing the existing zoning map to the R3, high-density, single-family residential district. The other classification as pertains to residential land use within the future land use map of the comprehensive plan is that there is a high-intensity residential color and that is equivalent to the zoning map area having a general relationship to R4, multifamily residential, as well as R5, mobile home park district. So in this comparison of what is on the future land use map and what is in the zoning district map, there is congruence to those different categories. Within the vicinity of this subject parcel, Allegheny County's future land use map identifies two future land use categories, conservation and infill. County's map classifies areas within the boundary of the subject parcel as conservation. There is a map of that both within the county's future land use plan and within the copy of our technical review. So when we look at the R4 district regulations and we have an overview of those highlighting some items of the R4-based district, there are a series of comparisons between the township's existing R2 and R4 zoning districts. So I'm going to identify some things that are pertinent to the R4 request. So the R4-based district has a purpose statement. The purpose of the R4 district is to reserve areas for the development of higher-density multifamily housing in the township in appropriate locations, which are served by public water and sewage and are located on arterial or collector roads close to shopping and community services and to provide for compatible public, semi-public, and accessory uses as conditional uses or uses by special exception. So this is Section 700 and there are two main goals, again, within this district. Goal A is to reserve areas for the development of higher-density multifamily housing in the township. And the second part of that goal is to provide for compatible public and semi-public accessory uses as conditional uses or uses by special exception. So what we are saying here is there are some two general land use points that are called out within the purpose statement of Section 700, the R4-based district highlighted. Now, in reality, Goal B is not part of anything that has been contemplated as we understand, specifically called out within the application. But we do have a particular focus here on Goal A. So there is consideration that is served by public water and sewage. And we believe that based upon our understanding of the mapping and the discussions to date, that those two items are available in the vicinity to the subject parcel. The second part of that is also considering the text that identifies it is located in an arterial or collector road close to shopping and community services. For a point of reference, there is R4 zoning within the vicinity of the requested parcel. So in the context of arterial or collector roads, if the district is not immediately adjacent to it, but it has been established. So what we need to consider is the criteria here for arterial and collector and it's what that vicinity is to those commercial, to the shopping and community services, excuse me. So in the Township of South Park's zoning ordinance in Article 2, Section 202, Sleepy Hollow Road is identified as a collector street under the definition for collector streets. We do have measurements that we took, a generalized measurement from the intersection of Stults and Sleepy Hollow. It's about two and a half miles driving distance, not as the road flies, but from the roads that are disrupted. About two, about two and a half miles of the driving distance from the closest set of shopping establishments and community services. It does not say or, it says and. So we looked for the locations where both of those things were in proximity to one another and what their, what that closeness is. So in three different routes, they were all within about that same distance. So that was about 500 feet from one another. So in that analysis, we've identified that all of those types of services are within that same distance from the nearby R4 property. All right, so we said that there is no other relationship or analysis associated with the public semi-public uses, whether it's public recreation or commercial recreation, as we do have work right next to the subject parcel. All right, now, after we considered those things, we also looked at in the base district of R2 and R4, what the land uses that are permitted are. Now, in reality, there are three ways in which development can be proposed in both R2 and R4 as it is currently written in the existing zoning ordinance. The first way in which land uses can be approached within the ordinance are through the base district classifications. Within those base districts, both R2 and R4, there is also a consideration for a second and third type of development application, which is related to planned residential development. So that's something to consider because it is one of the uses. I'm going to go down through the uses for these two districts. And this will be a list as part of what I read. All right, in the R2 base zoning district, Section 501, permitted by right, we have single-family dwellings, we have group homes, we have essential services. We have conditional uses, which are also permissible so long as they go through a conditional use process in front of you as Planning Commission and then to the Board for their consideration. Of public recreation, public buildings, firehouses, schools, churches, and places of worship, public utility buildings, planned residential development, including a retirement community. There is also a set of uses that are permissible in your R2 zoning district today, which are by special exception. And when they are done by special exception, that means they are not going in front of the Planning Commission and the Board for Review and Decision. They are going in front of the zoning hearing board for their determination as to if they are approved or not. Those uses that are currently called out in your zoning ordinance include a family daycare home as a home occupation, a daycare center or nursery school and a church or school, private stables and a temporary use or structure. So all the things that I've just gone through are items that are currently permissible in the R2 district as it stands today. So I just one part of this. In comparison, we have also a set of land uses that are currently permissible within the zoning classification of R4. They include townhouses by right, permitted by right. The other two things permitted by right are garden apartments and essential services. Things that are permitted by conditional use within the R4 district include public recreation, non-commercial recreation, public buildings, public utility buildings, group care or facility to your transitional dwellings, personal care boarding homes, planned residential, which again is something that I read over on R2. There are two special exceptions within R4 and they are called out in the ordinance as daycare center and a temporary use or structure. So what does that mean? If you did not have a chance to write everything down that I identified or follow along because those lists aren't quite lengthy, I will let you know that there, this is the following of what is a net change between R2 and R4. So the land uses currently not, excuse me, the land uses currently allowed in R2 that would no longer be permitted if this parcel were rezoned as R4 by a base district standard, non-planned residential development, include a single-family dwelling, a group home, a firehouse, a school, a church, a family daycare home as a home occupation, a daycare center or nursery school and a church or school, or private stables. If we took that the other direction, land uses permitted in R4 that are not currently permitted today in R2, according to conventional development, non-PRD, are townhouses, garden apartments, non-commercial recreation, group care facility or transitional dwelling, personal care boarding home, or a daycare center. Now, if we are comparing, again, in this non-PRD approach of R2 and R4, we have the ability then to consider sort of minimum lot sizes as well as if in the case of a number of units per building. So the minimum lot size within a non-PRD situation or approach in R2 is 12,000 square feet. And the permitted density in R4, as it's called out within the zoning ordinance, is then in terms of the number of units and it's called out as 12 units per acre for a townhouse and 12 units per acre for garden apartment. And in the R4, there is a maximum of eight units per building for a townhouse and a maximum of 36 units per building of our garden park. And I'd like to identify, again, we are still talking about a non-PRD comparison. When we look at the maximum permissible dwelling unit calculation comparison of this non-PRD situation, and I do know that I'm talking about quite a number of technical things that is this comparison, that the maximum unit calculation on the subject parcel as it's zoned, R2 for 54 acres, a non-PRD type of calculation would be 196 single-family dwellers. If we are looking at a maximum unit calculation of the subject parcel if it were zoned for R4 at that 54 acres in a non-PRD type of application later on, if that were to occur, it would be 648 units for townhouses and garden apartments. That is, I'm going to start. We still have more to review. There are maximum permitted number of residential buildings and townhouses. There would be 81 buildings using that maximum calculation that we identified above. And there would be a maximum of 18 apartment buildings and that's, again, we use the maximum permitted number of dwelling units per building called out in our previous points. Okay, so all of the items in that first part of the listings, again, are based upon what would be permissible as part of a non-PRD type of item as part of both of those districts. The second thing that we evaluated as part of this comparison is actually if we were to look at the planned residential development, which is both permissible presently within R2 and it is permissible presently within R4. So this next part is a comparison of that approach. The way in which PRD, again, planned residential development, can be applied within R2 and R4 is the first part of this focuses on the permissions for a retirement community PRD and the second part is for a non-retirement community PRD. Presently within zoning ordinance, if we were just to have an application for, again, R2 as it's currently zoned, for a retirement community planned residential development, there, that is permitted as identified. The maximum dwelling unit density of this in R2 is eight dwelling units per net buildable acre. A net buildable acre is one that means a portion of the PRD site, which is buildable, excluding steep slopes of 25% or greater, floodplains and wetlands. So we need to be taken off that calculation. There is a minimum parking requirement of one space for dwelling unit and one space for each employee on peak shift. Again, because in either of those, you may have something that is non-residential as the complementing point of the residential piece. Single-family dwellings are permissible within the R2 Retirement Community Planned Residential Development. Two-family dwellings are permissible within the Retirement Community Planned Residential Development. Townhouse buildings containing no more than five dwelling units per building are permissible within the R2 Retirement Community Planned Residential Development. Garden apartment buildings containing no more than 50 dwelling units per building are permissible within the R2 Retirement Community Planned Residential Development. A postal station is permitted, a banking facility is permitted, a pharmacy is permitted, personal services are permitted, an ice cream and or a florist or gift shop is permitted, personal care. an ice cream and or a florist or gift shop is permitted, personal care. All right, a personal care boarding home is permitted, a nursing home is permitted, a taxi van or similar transportation service is permitted. If we were to then look at that as a column as it relates to an R4 retirement community planned residential development, that is the exact same list as it relates to maximum dwelling unit densities of eight dwelling units per net buildable area, the parking requirements, and each of the land uses that we identified just a moment ago. So the net change between an R2 retirement community planned residential development and an R4 retirement community for planned residential development is none. There is no change between those two levels of permission. Again, that is based on net buildable area, not gross acreage. So if we then look at any other type of planned residential development, meaning one that is not focused on a retirement community PRD, and compare what is part of an R2 and R4, we did a side-by-side comparison of those, and in R2, for any other PRD, there are four dwelling units per net buildable acre. The minimum parking requirements in an R2 PRD that's not tied to retirement community are two off-street parking spaces for each dwelling unit, as well as one off-street parking space for every four dwelling units for visitor parking. Single-family dwellings are permitted in an R2 PRD that's not a retirement community, and two-family dwellings are permitted within that R2 PRD and non-retirement community. There is common open space that is required, actually, a minimum percentage of 25%. There are recreational facilities, as well as then a community center, which are permitted. If we were to look at the R4 PRD calculations as outlined within the existing zoning ordinance, the maximum dwelling density is 18 units per acre, and the parking is the same. Single-family dwellings are permitted within the PRD approach of non-retirement community. Remember, we identified that would be something in the base district that would change, but when a PRD is applied, that is permissible. As well as two-family dwelling is permissible in R4. Townhouses are permissible within R4, and garden apartments are permissible within R4. So there is a difference in the types of permission between of land uses, between what is a retirement community PRD and what is a non-retirement community PRD. However, in both cases, there is that full range of dwellings in the R2 PRD retirement community to have the single-family dwellings, the two-family dwellings, the townhouse dwellings, and the garden apartments, so long as it's fulfilled in that eight de-use per acre and building requirements. The open space calculation that is necessary for an R4 PRD, non-retirement, is the same as the R2 PRD. So we have one other thing as it relates, similar to what we did in the other calculations, and that is the number of dwelling units that are permissible based upon the calculations. This is not talking about the land use or the housing types, this is talking about just the calculation for the dwellings. A retirement community, maximum number of dwelling units based upon the information that was provided as part of the application, if it were to be maintained as R2, the subject parcel, the number of dwelling units maximum within a retirement community is 357. And based upon that, the number of parking spaces that are necessary, or at least 357 plus one per employee for any types of things that will be relevant to that. If we were to then have that same calculation for the retirement community PRD in R4, we would have the same number of dwelling units, because that is 357, as the requirement there is eight dwelling units, or as our maximum based on the area. Now, we considered that based upon information that we had from both the slopes and types of things as part of the county mapping and information that we have, simply for a LIDAR, that's all part of the city, because we created a slope map. The number of parking spaces, again, for that retirement community PRD are also at least 357 plus one per employee. So there is no net change in that maximum permissible number of dwelling units for the R2 or the R4 at in the retirement community situation. All other PRDs, based upon our identification here, because those dwelling densities do have a difference in the other non-retirement community PRD, four versus 18. The number of dwelling units permissible within a PRD non-retirement community at R2 are 178 dwelling units. The subject parcel if it were zoned R4, the maximum number of dwelling units at 18 units per acre, again, when we're talking about this category of non-retirement community, we do use the gross acreage of 54, that is 972, so it's a net change of 794. As part of the next part of our comparison, we identified using the trip generation, exhibit E, that was included within the application. We have used those calculations for, as presented by Wooster and Associates, and we did a comparison where in the analysis that was presented in the application, it was based upon 123 dwelling units classified as single-family detached housing, and 294 units calculated, or classified, excuse me, as multifamily housing, low-rise, not close to rail transit. We used these equations to calculate the trip generation based upon the base zoning requirements, things that we've gone over previously. And then we also looked at what those PRD calculations were based upon the acreages and the densities presented. So as part of the comparison, in a non-PRD, so just that base set of dwelling types or any of those other types, we did not look at things like places of worship or things like that, but we had, our base comparison was based upon housing types. So in R2, our single-family maximum, 196 units. Using the calculation presented in the application would produce an average daily trip of 1,874. Our AM peak hour was 137, and the PM peak hour calculation totaled to 187. And again, we were using the single-family units and the rates, excuse me, for the single-family units as presented within the application. R4 was identified as, we applied a multifamily there, as that's permissible, and there were a maximum number of 648 units. And that, using the calculations in exhibit E of the application, calculated 4,229. The AM peak hour would calculate to be 224, and the PM peak hour calculated using that baseline application information would be 299. So there is a net change between R2 and R4 in the AM peak hour of 87 trips, and the PM peak hour of 112 trips. We then used those same equations to apply to the PRD. So that's more. We also calculated from the standpoint of what the PRD does permit and how those units that related to exhibit E within the calculation, or the application, excuse me, of the comparison, again, of R2 single-family PRD, 178 units, the current R2 zoning at multifamily, 357 units. We also did the current R zoning, R2 zoning of single-family, again, at PRD, 357 units, and the R4 multifamily PRD, which would be 972 units. When we look at the AM and the PM peak hour ranges across the board between those PRDs, different equations, again, this is all based upon what's the maximum number permissible, because that's the way which this is all calculated and presented with, and permissible in the ordinance. It's a range of 8.7 to 199 AM peak hour trips, and 110 to 268 PM peak hour trips. As part of this analysis and our process going through, we also did coordinate, and in the way in which we were applying, the equation presented within exhibit E is one that was logical and a one-for-one of what was presented in the application. We did that with staff, got gateway engineers, and they identified that we were consistent in applying that equation to the way in which we calculated our number of dwellings. So we have examination beyond all of those calculations of where there are existing residential zones and the sort of parcel sizes throughout the township. We did evaluate, based upon collector and arterial roads, we looked at where the R4 proposed rezoning is, and we identified that there are other areas of existing R4 zoned parcels within the township. We did conduct a slope analysis, again, based upon available county information and LIDAR, and then sort of its relationship to the rest. So we have four findings in our summary. And we identified that the proposed rezoning of the subject parcel does not conform to the goals of the South Park Township Future Land Use Plan, where the future land use on the subject parcel is designated as low-intensity residential, and we interpret this classification to be the equivalent of either the R1 or the R2 zoning districts as it is identified within your. I do have more to say, please. The second finding is that Allegheny County's Future Land Use Plan designates areas within the subject parcel as conservation rather than infill development. Our understanding of the subject parcel and its existing conditions aligns with the county's future land use designation, given the parcel's high percentage of steep slope coverage and its existing character. As such, the rezoning of the subject parcel to R4 does not align with the county-wide plan recommendations. The county's designation of land use areas for infill orients new development toward places already developed where existing road networks and infrastructure are already accommodating more intense vehicular and pedestrian activity. And I'll have one other thing to say about that in a moment. Based upon information presented this evening. Based upon the comparison of R2 and R4, the zoning districts permissible land uses and the dwelling unit densities, we observed that an R4 rezoning of the subject parcel would permit a density increase greater than five times what is permitted under the provisions of the R2 medium-density single-family dwelling, excuse me, single-family residential district. I am aware, and I identified in our analysis, there are scenarios between R2 and R4, such as the non, again, such as the retirement community PRD, where that five times type of statement does not apply, because those two calculations are exactly the same. However, we were looking at what the range is between what is within the base zoning district of each, and then what the maximum dwelling units are in terms of if a PRD were a part of the application, because that is a permissible land use in both categories as a conditional use. So we needed to look at that type of scale. We have no particular points of reference for any type of land development application. That is not the subject, as our understanding is, of what this rezoning is. It's specifically a redesignation of the district boundary. Nothing associated with an application as for land development was within the application request. The request was specifically for, as we interpreted, the rezoning of a MEC. So from that standpoint, we do have that range, right? The fourth one is that we observed that the, again, using the information with the equations that were in exhibit E for the daily trips, the AM and PM peak hour, that based upon those permissible dwellings calculations and those traffic equations, that there would also be a wide range of potential outcomes with that application of those equations. Now, we are also fully aware that we are not having, again, any specific land development associated with this rezoning. It's specifically for the boundary of the districts. So we also are aware that if there were to be any land application, land development application in the future, that anything that would be an impact to infrastructure or to roads, to any sorts of things of that nature, that that would need to be an element that was addressed specifically then. So that we have quite a number of things that we took a look at. We recognize that the zoning ordinance as it presents itself today for both R2 and R4 do have some differences between the two districts. When it comes to land uses, depending upon what is approached as a base application, this district, by right, if there is something by conditional use within a PRD for a retirement community, or a PRD that is all, all types of other PRD, there are quite a number of ways in which the land uses can be applied. So there is the possibility within both districts depending upon the approach to have various dwelling units that can be put forth as part of any application ranging from the single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings and up, townhouses and or apartments. So that is the conclusion of our observations and comparisons as it relates to the two districts. Thank you.